Wait for Whacka to count this down.
Alright, you guys are good.
Good? Okay. Good morning, everybody. September 11th, 2020. And I'll start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our plan this morning, open session called to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. We'll have period for public comment. And our items include COVID-19 update, phases, models of learning, status of athletics, and then we will adjourn. This is our Friday morning check in that we established for this period of time. So I will open it up first to ask if there's anybody here who wants to give public comment. I don't see anybody, but sometimes I don't see everybody. So if you're here and you want to comment.
Just Lori.
And I'll take a roll call. Everybody's here. And that is okay with the order of business this morning. Paul Kendall.
Hi, yes.
Kathy Bates?
Here and yes.
Mark Terry?
Here and yes.
Aaron Williams?
Here and yes.
Yes, thank you. Now I will ask for public comment, but I don't think there's anybody here other than other than those participating in the meeting. And so I'll turn it over to you, Jim.
Sure. Thank you. So I'm actually going to quickly, I'll turn it over to Aaron. She has been working hard at creating a dashboard, if you will, for our use in terms of making things really clear for the for the community and faculty and staff to look at and using the data that we have on those Wednesdays that's reported by the state, but also then adjusted appropriately through our work with Ed and the COVID Task Force for the town to ensure that our numbers are up to date that we're presenting to you on a Friday morning. So this is through yesterday. So Aaron, I think you have access to share that screen.
So it says the host has disabled screen sharing, so.
But you haven't made her call those.
Oh, there, that's why. You will be in a second.
Okay.
Now you should have access. I apologize.
Yes, okay. So. Let me know when you can see my screen.
Yep.
Okay, so the version that you guys have fits nicely on one page and is easier. I'm going to walk you through this just because this has the Excel and can walk you through each sort of section. So top left is cases for that week. So there's sort of two metrics that the state seems to be following, the weekly and the fourteen day count. So this week, there's four new cases. The fourteen day count is ten. So that's down four from the prior two week period. And obviously, six plus four is ten. So that's our two weeks. So last week was six weekly cases. This week is four. So we're down two. Um, the adjusted cases are the cases that Ed gives to me, which won't necessarily match the state dashboard. So in this fourteen day incidence rate, I have both how we're calculating it based on the data versus what you're going to see if you looked at the the map that the state provides or the detailed town by town that they provide on Wednesdays. So you can see there's actually a significant difference this week. Um, and would actually change the color of the town. Um, Ed and I spoke yesterday and no one can confirm the when to when of the data set that the state is using. And so for us, this is the best that we can do. So for us this week, this would actually put our case rate under four and turn us green. And that's why, let me move your pretty faces. There we go. That's why there's sort of two colored ashlands here where I'm saying green is the true, but the yellow is what's reflected in the state map.
So Erin, can you just maybe explain that again? So why? Why, why is our, how are our numbers different from what, how the state is or?
So there's, there is cases that the state is including that Ed has reached out to them and said these need to be scrubbed and taken out for XYZ reasons. So one reason Kathy might be like what we talked about last week where there was a twenty one year old. She goes to college in Virginia. She was in Virginia at the time of the test, but listed Ashland as her, as her home state.
Okay. So, so Ed is, so is it fair to say Ed has looked at the numbers and because he's asking the questions and diving in a little deeper, he knows that, that, so, okay.
Right. So for example, Erin, I just found out this morning, we have one that was included in your numbers. That's at the University of Connecticut.
Okay.
One of our, one of our numbers now.
Correct. Because she, because she used her home address when she got tested.
Okay. So Ed, if you know the case number.
Yep.
If you read me the case number, I'll change our metrics.
So her case number is 105285263.
Can I just ask the question on that particular point? I mean, it's, obviously it feels good when we're able to scrub the data, get more accurate information and it makes the number go down. What are other communities doing and is the sort of flip side happening where somebody says for whatever reason, they report Ashland. But they really, I should say it the other way around. They don't report Ashland, but it turns out to be ours. So somebody is I don't know, they're a student at UMass. They would say Amherst, but they're actually participating remotely and living at home.
Yes. So, so Mark, if they're in mass, so for example, if I get, I'll use a great example, Mark. Last week we had one where the person was tested at the nursing home that they work in, in Natick. And what happened was Natick, he used the Natick address. Well, when Natick Board of Health called him and asked for his real address, when Natick changes that to Ashland, then I get it.
Okay.
So as long as they're within mass, we're swapping these amongst boards of health.
So everybody's doing the same kind of scrubbing you are and it should all come out?
Probably not to the depth I am, but, but at least for basic addresses, yes.
Okay.
So that, that, that specific case was from mid-July, Ed, the Connecticut one. So it's not changing that. Just so you guys know, it's not changing our numbers. But we have this exclusion, sorry, the most needy dog in the world right now. We have this exclusion list where any of the cases Ed tells me that should not be counted as a part of our data, go on the exclusion list and then they're taken out of the calculations. So here, right, we have two.
So Erin, just a quick question on the adjustment. Is that the only type of adjustment that is being made? You're not making any adjustments for clusters or kind of reducing the number based on anything like that? It's strictly whether they're in or out based on location, right?
Correct. Any of like the clustering and stuff is really going to come from the context, which is a little bit lower on the dashboard and we'll get there.
And so just for future, is there, is there any room to have the actual number in there as well?
So this is the state dashboard. So if you go look at the state dashboard.
But, but, but right there, you don't have, you don't have the number of cases, number fourteen, April, daily average cases. So we can see the results of the difference, but we don't see the difference.
Here's, yeah.
They're over here.
Here it is. Here's the state number. So right this week, nine hundred sixty five tests. Ed and I have determined the fourteen day rate, fourteen day cases is ten. The state's reporting nineteen.
Okay, so it's.
Here's the state numbers for the positives and here's the state numbers for the incident rate. So you've got both to compare.
Uh, yeah, I guess we feel confused why neither one of those matches the two, the ten that's in the left hand side.
No, so the ten is here. So that matches there. But this is what is on the state map and the state dashboard or the, um, the detailed file. So the test number doesn't change. But what we consider positive versus what the state's considering positive, this, the difference is nine. So that brings you to the next session, which is the positivity rate. So these are manually keyed in. And actually I can show you. So when I'm going through this, I highlight like where I need to put state numbers and whatnot. So these are keyed in based on the actual dashboards. So the test numbers and the state numbers are coming from the actual state dashboards and the COVID websites.
And can I just also, I want to let people know about exact, one other one that I combined that was in this week's data. So there was a, a resident that got tested. I'll just use this example. She got tested as Jane Jones and then she decided to go for a second test. And on the second test, she told them that her name was Jane Jones Smith. But then, so I have to get those two records combined. But so when things like that happen.
So per us, our positivity rate is one percent, down slightly from last week. And just slightly higher than the mass rate is now point oh eight, or point eight percent.
Erin, would it be possible to show that into the tenths of a percentage point like the mass data, the difference between, I assume you're rounding, but you know, one point four nine versus one point oh one might be significant in the future.
How's that?
Perfect.
There you go.
Yeah, I think we talked about, I mean, our positivity rate, you know, it's like, you don't know the value of that anyway. Like, we shouldn't really be making decisions based on such a small possibly, possibly an accurate number, right? It's more about whether overall the state were, were doing enough testing.
Yeah, I think it's, it helps see the trend a little bit if that's what we're going to look at. Right? If that, if that number were changing, that would be something we, I think we would be relevant. I, I've struggled to fully appreciate the import of that number too. And I don't need to go into the weeds of that right now, but just.
It's just if there's two, two five member families, they all test positive, that's going to jump dramatically with a smaller subset like that.
Yeah, it all has context.
Yeah.
Erin, in that column, what, can you just say, what's the VPW? Can you just?
Prior week.
Versus prior week.
Yeah, verse, versus prior week. Thank you.
So we're up as far as testing by forty five, but we're down by positives. So then the metrics matrix is just the reference that Jim had previously included in a lot of the communications. Um, and again, I will show what color the state is coming up, both from our calculations and from the state calculations. So this week, we would say we're green. State says we're yellow. Hopefully next week, we're a little bit more aligned. Then Mark had asked that I put a weekly incidence rate. So this is showing, starting with fiscal week eleven, and I'm doing fiscal week, I know Ashland's fiscal is July, July. I'm doing annual fiscal week, just so you know. So fiscal week fifty three is going to be the last week of December. And I started with eleven. There is one case back in February, but I believe, Ed, you had said that the reporting date on that might have been incorrect or an outlier. So I just started with fiscal week eleven. And so this will update every week as well, the incident rate.
Thank you, Erin.
So then we've got for the last two weeks each day, these are the cases. Um, for us to focus on are the ones with blue outlined in red. Those are school aged. And then what you'll see above is the list of ages of the positives. So for August twenty ninth, there's three positives, a seventeen year old, a twenty four year old and a thirty seven year old. And then, and just for reference, of the ten, so there's ten cases from the past two weeks. But there are twelve open cases. So that means two cases from three weeks ago are still under quarantine restrictions. And the way these are bucketed as far as the age groups is just based on, okay, babies and toddlers is everything below three, preschools, three and four, school age is five to eighteen, college age is eighteen to twenty two. Adult is everything, twenty two to sixty five, and elderly is sixty five plus. So then these ages are then calculated into potentially impacting our schools. We are not manipulating the data and having Ed tell us who are actually students. We are just going on, okay, five, six, seven is Warren and eight, nine, ten, maybe eleven Mendez. So you could have theoretically like my child's a red shirt child. So he would have last year, if he last year he tested positive, it would be showing up in the AMS, but he'd really be a Mendez student. So this is not completely accurate. It's just trend. And it's just showing potential impact because we also are not capturing whether these children are actually in our school system or not. And between speaking with Jim, Ed and myself, the feeling was, it doesn't really matter. Because whether your kids are remote learners, homeschool, or actually in the school system, they may be cross pollinating. There's going to be cross pollinating across cohorts, A through L and A through K and L to Z. And there's probably going to be cross pollinating between the types of learning as well. So.
Yeah, to that point, Erin, I mean, I don't know the value of trying to say impacting APS because what impacts our decision is community spread, right? Regardless of whether it's a student at this point, whether it's all thirty year olds, the fact that if you had community spread at a significant rate and not a single student has yet tested positive, we would still be having the same conversation, right? So everything impacts us from if it, if we're actually talking about community spread. And by all means, Jim and Ed, to be honest, that's not, you know. So I'm a little concerned about phrasing it this way as like impact. It only matters if, you know, it sounds like we're saying it only matters if students test positive, which isn't really what we're going to base our decision on, right? That's certainly a factor. And if we have a bunch of students, it probably isn't even a cluster, right? If it's, you know, isolated to the lower ages, but this is all about what's going on in our community as a whole. And if there's community spread regardless of the age and if we don't, we can't put a little circle around it saying, yes, because we've done the contact tracing and we know it's isolated to, you know, this building or this democrat, you know, this skilled nursing or this apartment building or something like that. You know, that's where we're, so I'm a little concerned. I don't want people to say, well, all that matters, all we're looking at is whether it's school age kids or not.
So I absolutely see your point. And I think we make it clear to the community when this is published that we're taking in all the data, not just this little subset. But what I would conversely say is that, say you do have, after the first two weeks of school, at Warren, you have six cases, but you have none in the other schools. That's going to maybe guide Jim and our decisions about, do we take a day off or three days off at Warren, reevaluate what, you know, I think the.
But we, we would do that if, if we've said that those are Warren students, not just that there's school age kids of that age.
Correct.
If they're remote, if they're, if they're all remote students because, and they've been clustering themselves in a pod, right? Again, we draw a circle around that. I wouldn't just, so that's what I'm saying, without that context, this, I guess, you know, I just don't want this to be misleading to people.
Well, I think for also parents, and it's, I absolutely agree with you. We don't want to be misleading. But even if they are podded or the parent, like we're not saying it's absolutely in the schools, it's a warning to the parents that like, hey, there is children out there, my child's age, that are testing positive and maybe I need to reevaluate how safe I'm being.
Yeah. So, so maybe we just remove impacting APS. Because what that's saying is this is, this is what's impacting us, which that's, that's my concern. It's not that we're just capturing the ages. That's fine, right?
And that's, and Paul, your point, and that's what I tried doing initially with my spreadsheet, was capturing it by age group. Because I felt as though the, the teaching staff really found that useful. At least the comment I, I received was, okay, this is what's happening within our community. Not necessarily, again, we have, you know, a hundred kids who attend private high schools. In, you know, that live in Massachusetts or live in Ashland. How is that impacting our decision making? And so that's why I just lumped it as, you know, certain age brackets.
Yeah. So maybe just phrase it by that as well. Like I said, impacting APS just sounds a little bit more loaded, I guess.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. And I know where Aaron was going with it. So, yeah.
So if I take this out though, it doesn't, I guess, if we.
You say by, by age group.
By age group, yeah. And then we can adjust the column, Erin, after.
Doesn't that really give you just another visual on what we have on the left?
It is. It's taking those school age kids and it's greater grain of detail.
Yeah.
Yes, just flip, is, yeah, just flipping it around saying, you know, middle school kids, age, right?
But so hold on a second. So just from listening, so does that, do those numbers in that chart tell us if they're remote, like full remote?
No, no. We do not, Kathy, we do not, I do not know what it means.
So that, that, let's just say, for example, that one AHS, perhaps that could be somebody learning completely remote, but this chart, we can't read that. We're just thinking, oh, somebody in the high school has it.
I think Kathy's right. I think if.
That's how I would.
Shows the way it is now. If somebody just looked at that quickly, because that's all they're going to do. They're going to think that's somebody had a JESS or Mendez rather than of that age.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would think.
So that's why there's the, the footnote three and down.
Aren't reading footnotes.
I know. Then you gotta go read a footnote.
They're not reading anything.
And that's why I said potentially impacted, not actually impacted. I can rename these to high school, middle school, upper elementary, lower elementary. And just do it that way?
Yes. So maybe say.
Yeah, maybe that.
Okay.
Yeah. And not the school. Cause by labeling it as a school, that's what I think. They're in the school.
That you feel like, and so.
But if it's really just another sort of, just a different way of showing what's already here on the left.
Yeah.
Why don't we just delete it? It seems to be causing some confusion. And I think we all agree that that's not going to be a major factor in any overall decision that we need to make. Because we're, we are talking about community spread. So, so why don't we just delete it? It sounds like it's, it's getting us.
So, but, but Jim, did you say that the faculty found something like that useful?
I can change the, here, I'll change the school names to just.
Age group?
Age, yeah.
Maybe high, high, high school age, even maybe even just, I don't know. Yeah.
Pick a number. I mean.
I, I had, and that's where I did.
Five, six.
We can.
I'll go back to Jim's numbers and we'll do it that way.
Okay. Cause so I just, I just want to be clear. So we're not necessarily saying they're in those buildings. It's just the age group. Okay.
Yeah. And I think that would be. Kathy, we don't know any demographic information. So let me show you what is actually sent to me and Jim. This is what I get. So there's. Oh, sorry. I was only sharing, sorry. I was trying to protect the word stuff. Anyway, it's case ID, age and status and dates, and that's it. So no genders, no like addresses or anything, no, none of the contract tracing details, any of that.
Okay. So Jim, do you ever, so then do you find out though, if they're in our, like, how do you find that out? Or do you find that out if they're in our schools?
So that would be a, a question for, I mean, do I find out eventually? Yes. But it, it's a nursing conversation with Audrey and then we deal with it internally. And then the local board of health has to deal with it. So Ed deals with it. So if we had a cluster in, in say the middle school and we have protocols in place to determine what we do in terms of closing down the school, closing down a classroom, we have those protocols. And, but I don't get, you know, the, the individual names, that is private information and that stays with Audrey and Ed.
Yeah. So then Audrey and Ed inform you that there's somebody in your school?
Correct.
Okay.
I just, I think that's, you know, if that, if we have that kind of scenario, to me, that kind of data fits in the context box.
Correct.
Right? That, that's where I think it would be helpful to us to have.
Yeah. And that's where, and we did add some of that this week, Mark, because of one of the cases, right? You know.
And which one is the context box?
Down at the bottom.
Bottom.
We haven't gotten there.
Oh, way then, way at the bottom here, context. Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Let me just do this really quickly for you.
Erin, I think, I think you're going to be better off going with the ages.
Yeah, we'll talk about it after. We'll get it squared away with the ages after.
Okay.
Because still, if you say middle school and high school.
Right. Yeah. Well, yeah.
Do the brackets. All right. Shall we move on to the Tri Valley League?
Please.
Okay. So the lighter, so obviously these are colored in the town colors. Um, the lighter version of the bar is the prior week and the darker version is this week. So the bars themselves are the incident rate. And the dots above are the positivity rate, where the gray one is the prior week with smaller font, the darker one with the bold font is this week. And then I have put reference lines at four and eight. So if from zero to four is green, four to eight is yellow, and then eight and above is red. And so these communities are all pretty much at the same metrics as us or less. So per this state, actually our incidence rate is the highest out of the TVL. And so I also don't have, because of, you can tell all the scrubbing that Ed and I are doing, I still, for the rest of the Tri Valley League, I have to take their state numbers as is.
Right.
Should we put, should we put us on that chart too, just to make it easier to compare?
Yeah, same thing, Kathy.
Okay. Happy to.
That way we can see us compared to them.
And, and just to make sure comparing apples and apples, you should probably do the state.
Yeah.
Oh, right. Okay. Yeah.
Use the state one?
Yeah.
If that's what you're using for them, I guess, right? Cause that's what they'll use for us, I guess, right?
Right.
Right. Yeah, we're just getting, we're more granular because I think we just have a relationship, you know, with Ed that ensures that we're having this conversation every day. So not, I don't, again, that's just my anality of, of looking even at enrollment every day. So.
We appreciate that, Jim.
Don't say too much. DPH might want to hire me.
Right.
No, we need you in.
So the state positivity rate for last week was this and this week it's. Okay.
So Erin, can, I know you've got some cleanup to do on this. Can, just for time sake for everybody, can you walk through that section over at the, at the bottom with the, the notes? And that's important.
So essentially for Tri Valley League, what we would do is we would go through each town every week and say whether we are going to play and what the decision is. And so I preloaded these, assuming that we are going to play.
Yeah.
Starting next week. And so I think this would be the first, Lori, that this would be the first motion we would need to make. And I think you could do it as we will play all towns except for blank when we have an exception.
Right.
So are we making motions every week or is it just in case we need to change? I mean, we already voted that it could move forward.
We, we're actually, there's no competition. We won't be in, the twenty fifth is the first possible date that we have a.
And we got to be clear, it's not, we're only playing, Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're only playing one town per week.
Each weekend. Yeah.
Per week, the.
It's not all the team.
Right. The, the one exception would be golf and that depends on the course availability, because a lot of the schools share.
But the other sports, it's only one town.
Yes.
I want to be clear. It's not.
And Bellingham will be the first one, October. And Bellingham will be the first one, October 10th, that we're really looking at.
But we're a ways away.
Yep.
And Stephen, aside from golf, the, the first, uh, competition is until October, right?
October 10th, Bellingham, yeah.
Okay, so then, for now, I guess I would leave these blank.
Yep.
I mean, they can say play, and-
I think it looks good, though, Aaron, because it show, it'll keep people-
Good to track.
Yeah.
Track.
There's, there's nothing wrong with that, and I, I, but to Lori's question, I, I think we only vote exceptions, you know, when we, when we're changing the status quo. Right now, we're agree, we're go for everything. We would only vote, change that, and then vote to go back or whatever, right?
Yeah, okay.
We've already approved it, so.
Right, okay. All right, so then we would get to context, which I'm sure this will also get discussed as we're discussing the rest of the dashboard. Um, but the context for this week is that there are four cases in one family that represent a third of the total open cases of 12, and this was caused by an outside visitor knowing they had tested positive not following quarantine.
We weren't on camera, I would make a comment.
So what else might go into that context? Is that all, is that context box, is that all you, Jim, giving some context to these, or?
Yeah, it would be, it would be the context that, when you're seeing either an increase in numbers or a decrease in numbers, um, where we just want to let you know that as we dug more deeply and having conversations with Ed, we, I, again, I wanna know, why, why were there four cases on this particular incident date? Or it's actually a combination of dates because of the way they report it. Um, why did that occur, and how is that impacting the community? And, again, without getting into, um, privacy laws and issues and, and medical, we, we just have to have some context to it, um, and, and-
Yeah, so that, that was, that was in your comments.
Yeah, so for Friday's meeting, Kathy, it's just, hey, here's why, and this is why we're reviewing this weekly, yeah.
Okay, Kathy, that would also apply not only to just regular cases, but, you know, we've talked about at the facilities in town.
Yeah.
Where, um, where if we had, say, an outbreak at, um, Waterview or the residences at Valley Farm, if it's contained to that building, that's less community spread than it is five different elderly people that maybe were working pools in September or at the senior center. Got it.
So, in that box, you might put that comment, is what you're saying?
Yeah, without revealing anything HIPAA and privacy.
Yes, yeah.
Right, but I think we need to also be careful about our own assumptions that we bring to that, um, to that information, because I guess, you know, in the, um, case of an assisted living or nursing home, we, maybe it's safer to make the assumption that it's contained within that organization. But, I mean, if you said, you know, if my whole family had it, for instance, I mean, my kids are working in other district, uh, in other towns, um, you know, they see other people more than they see me. So kind of assuming that it's maybe, just let's be careful about the assumptions that we bring to the information that we're sharing.
I'm not making assumptions, I'm just-
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that you are, I'm saying just moving forward, I think it's helpful to have that information, but, but just because it's in one family doesn't mean that we don't have any information about what those, um, four people are actually doing, and who they've been in contact with and so forth.
Yeah, so, so, so I think that's where Ed and his, and the contact tracing-
Yeah.
All about what, how complete and comfortable they are with what they've done.
Right.
That, that lends us that context.
Right.
So, Aaron, so Aaron, maybe a good idea here would be, just put the four cases in one family. Just get rid of that caused by outside visitor not following quarantine, you know?
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
Especially coming to comment on that.
If anything, we can add in there more reference to something you're telling us that as far as, you know, con- and, and, you know, COVID task force, you know, comfortable with, you know, contact tracing, something like, something like that, that, that's, that's the contextual stuff that Lori was talking about, that your team has done the, the work, and are comfortable advising us that this is a cluster that you can draw a circle around comfortably.
Yep.
I have a couple, couple comments, too. One, I think there actually is some indirect benefit of including detail, like, you know, how the person contacted it, because-
I agree.
It allows the rest of us to, in the community, it's not just in the committee, to look at that and, and realize what's happening in our community. Um, it's, without identifying people, it's, it's, honestly, it's a little bit of a public shaming thing. Um, it's realized, this was dumb, this didn't have to happen. And it shows that if we took precautions or followed rules, we would be in a better place. I think that's a good message to have people think about. Um, the second question I have is, are we, is this something we're gonna be putting up on our website and sharing in that regard? So if that, that, and that sort of furthers the, the point I just made, which is, this is not bad stuff for people to be taking note of and paying attention to. Um, and, you know, for that reason, I, you know, I'd be cautious about it, I'm not, I, in this particular case, I look at this and I have a reaction based on that narrative, that I think a lot of people who would look at that would be like, okay, jackass or, or something, right? But it's important for people in the community to, to realize these kind of dumb things are happening, and I think when they see numbers go up with those kind of comments, it's gonna cause everybody to reflect on what they're doing. Now, you know, here is a group of kids got together, did something, well, I do that, you know, I let my kids do that. Um, so, you know, I think there's gonna be some, some reinforcement effect here if we can provide a little bit of detail that will cause people to think better.
I, and I agree with Mark, I mean, last time Ed told us, last week, Ed told us about how, oh, a few of the cases were clustered in one apartment building, and that apartment building was doing extra cleaning, I mean, that, to me, is sharing with people, wash your damn hands, and, right? So I, I like including a little bit more with, while always following, you know, heaven, privacy laws.
Yeah, and, and so I, I, I agree with that to a certain level, but also, we might be flirting with something there, too, so, you know, if I live near somebody who happens to be a family of four, who I know is on quarantine, I've just, you know, kind of singled them out with some stuff as well, so it's not just arbitrary anymore. Um, you know, so, yeah, I, I, I-
The only way you know they were on quarantine is if they shared it with you.
Not the point, right?
So, but like, it's up to, people are also responsible for their own privacy.
Yeah, I guess I look at this as, you know, if it's something, if it's a detail that Ed learns through his contact tracing, and he's comfortable sharing it from a privacy perspective, I'm okay also sharing it, but I also trust Ed won't cross lines. Um, and, you know, if, we should, we should be conservative on that, right? And I think, I suspect Ed is very conservative about that, so. I, I think for us, as a committee or as a district, reporting what we've learned through proper channels is okay. I, I, I really, I appreciate your point, Paul, I mean, you, the scenario you set up would feel a little uncomfortable, but I'll also be okay saying, you know, if Ed was okay sharing that with us, then I'm okay putting it on the dashboard. That's my personal opinion.
I mean, if it's a reminder that could actually change behavior, and, um, you know, not to be overly dramatic, but potentially save lives, um, that, that's not a bad thing.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, I always lean-
But I hear what you're saying, Paul, yeah.
Yeah, I always lean towards the way I phrased it before, that contact tracing, it's all about our, our stuff and not, I guess, even though I, I understand that there could be some good come out of it, I don't know, I guess I'm not a public shamer, um, I, I, I don't, I don't like being in the business of that. So, just me, I'm one of five.
Well, I, I agree with Mark, like, if, if Ed is okay sharing it from the contract tracing, and it's gone through the, you know, the private, privacy, and it's gone through the right channels, I'm okay with the detail.
So.
So, then we would have the conclusion, and al- also, this context, we can, if you, if all of us feel more comfortable, I can send out the pre-meeting version on Thursday nights. You have a chance to look at it, we can always edit the context before it goes public. And then this conclusion piece would be our, essentially, our motion for the week, which, uh, during the nine, eleven, eighteen, meeting, the school.
But, but just again, I, I don't think we're making motions each week, right?
Only if, only if we need to adjust, right?
Right, right, so, so this is just, you know, uh, the conclusion could be, you know, no changes necessary.
Right.
Right? Remaining hybrid.
Right, yeah.
Agreed.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. So I think, Aaron, thank you so much, because I, you know, taking that data that I had, um, and then putting it into a nice visual like this, I think is really, um, very helpful. It's been helpful for me to, to be able to, to work through it and, and identify it, so. Um, I know it takes a lot of time for you to, to pull this together for me, and you have to then train me on, uh, making sure I put the data in appropriately when I get it.
Yeah, we really appreciate it, Aaron, this is, this is really fantastic, thank you.
So, will this reside with you, Jim, this?
Eventually, Aaron, yes, eventually, um, Aaron has to do an, an Excel training, um.
I'm also okay with it, Jim, just so with one last thing off your plate, I, it would, does not take me very long at all.
Oh, yeah, you and I can discuss, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're sharing the data back and forth when Ed gets it, so.
Yeah.
But thank you, this is really good for me, so.
All right.
Thanks, Aaron, I think this is, this, this looks really good.
Yeah.
One thing that I think would be really helpful is having the two week, the prior two week, and, and the prior two week, uh, because we, we need to be able-
Not just the V prior, you wanna show the actual number?
Because our decision making i- is supposed to be, at a minimum, the trend over the last three-
Right.
Uh, cycles, right, so.
Good point.
That's what Desi wants, yeah.
Right, and, and I, I think it's prudent, right? Just because we had a jump-
I agree.
Or a jump, you know, and it didn't go down the next week, well, it's not gonna go down the next week, right? That's why you need at, at least a three-week rolling average.
Yeah.
Because one spike stays there for two weeks, right? Um, and so, some, some way to figure that in, a way to dis- display, um, what, and, and so, uh, it, it's more in the, it's, it's more in the per hundred thousand, trying to figure out what's our, what's our trend over the last, over the last three cycles? So just figure out how to, how to add that in there, and maybe some of the other things we talked about that are a little less valuable, we shrink down a little bit, but, um, I think that'll help us at a point where, okay, now we're yellow, right? Now we're really yellow with our true information, with our scrubbed information. But what, now we need to have a conversation, we'll be able to have a visual of, that helps us guide that conversation.
So, Paul, you have the incident rate here all the weeks, so.
So i- is, is, that, that's, that's the incident, that's the per hundred thousand there?
It is, but it's by week, it's not bi-weekly. That calculation's really hard to do.
So, if you, like, I don't even know, I mean, I know you, you explain what those weeks meant, but I, what week are we in when I look at that? Eleven to, you know what I mean?
We're in 37.
But how do I know that? I don't know that.
Um.
I, how do, as a-
The most recent week on there, Kathy, would be the one that we're talking about right now.
Yeah, and I know it's the end of the line, yeah. Color that one, because you could, like fiscal week 24, we didn't have any, um, so you could have it drop down to zero. Um, I can color the most recent ones, or it's highlighted, or I can just say current fiscal week, I can put a little note in the top, current fiscal week is whatever.
Um, so.
You can show the date, like a week ending date, and that's gonna be cramped.
That, it's gonna be really tight, Mark, if I-
Yeah.
I do, I do a weekly graph that I send to Jim. Um, I'm just wondering if that would be easier to be sent out separately. Um, Jim, you know the two charts I sent to you?
Yeah, I, I think we should keep it all on here if we can, I think it's fine, it's just me as regular, so, like, how do I know what week I'm in?
I, I agree, Kathy, maybe, Aaron.
But it might be a title.
A year's worth of information there, right?
Well, so what I can do, see how these labels have the ages, I will put a label over the most recent week.
Well, but, but, but I guess, e- even that, i- it's an eye chart. Do I honestly care what was going on in week 11? I don't.
May, uh, oh.
There's no, there's, there's no way I, I care about that right now. So, I don't, I guess my point is, why have a whole, whole fiscal year for information?
So, Mark, Mark had asked for this, and I agreed with it, because also, as we start, and it's a little bit of that public mindset and the information, right? If we start to creep back up towards 10 and 11, we know how high we can go, and how bad it can get.
Right.
And maybe that's beha- it helps with behavior change.
I think it's interesting for context.
I do, too, I like seeing that, but I just wanna know, like-
You just don't understand.
It doesn't help us with our third time.
Maybe it's just the title, like you were saying, Aaron, like, current, or it's, or it's color that, you color the bar that we're in, the week we're in, and you say, week we're in, I don't know. I like, I like seeing the chart.
I'll put a little label.
Current week. Or something, we'll see, okay?
Not a problem. And then I will put the, um, I guess it wasn't here that, because, Paul, you were asking for three weeks of-
Right, we wanna be able to see the week, the week we're in, the week before, and the week in, in the, in the week before that, right? Is that what you're thinking, Paul, like the three?
I mean, I'd admit it minimum, but that's the guidance, and it makes sense, right? Because a two-week thing, well, if we had a, if we have a jump of eight people this week, right? It's gonna be on the next two cycles.
Right.
Right?
So what if I, I mean, maybe this V prior week percent is not meaningful. What I could do is I could do two weeks prior, put those numbers there, and then another V. So in here, in the 14-day incidence rate, I, and I should be able to calculate the 14-day incidence rate for three weeks back, I can put that there. So I'll get rid of this V prior week percentage, because it's not as meaningful, and I'll do two weeks prior, and another V below it, and I'll just move some of the graphs down.
Yeah. And then, Aaron, once, and then you and I can get this squared away, and then we can, if we can, uh, PDF it like you always do to me, that's what I, that's what I can put into my weekly newsletter.
Exactly.
As a, as a, and then we'll have that in there, and each week we'll have one updated as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so this is just gonna take me a little bit of cleanup, you guys will get the final version shortly, um.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
So, so, in essence, um, this is what we'll be getting weekly, and, um, and you'll have it on Thursday, um, so you can review it for Friday when we have the conversation, so our meetings won't necessarily be any longer, uh, unless we have some explaining to do with regard to the actual cases, so. Um, so for this meeting, you know, athletics and, um, and the, the hybrid model, everything is the same, we're not adjusting anything, so, um, you know, that's really, that's it.
No votes necessary.
Nothing, no, nothing needed, it's just the sharing of the data, and we will share this out publicly.
And I, I think, because just this first time-
Yeah.
I drove a little bit just to show people what stuff is. I, I'm thinking it's a 15 to 20-minute meeting.
Yeah, all we're gonna do is get the, the PDF that we would share, yeah.
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay, great, thanks, Aaron, that's great.
Welcome.
All right, anything else to add, Jim? Paul?
Uh, just one quick question, so just up the upper left-hand corner, that is our adjusted data, right?
Yes.
Four and ten. So maybe the asterisk needs to be somewhere, that needs to say it, or, that needs to say that, too, right? So, so we have the adjusted in the state.
Yeah.
Um, so just to highlight that we're, that we're, that that's what that is, right? Because they're gonna look at the state dashboard, and, and it's not gonna jive, and probably should say that, that's what that is.
There you go. And this top, just, you know, this top stuff doesn't get published, but I can, we can switch back and toggle between weeks if we ever need to.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right, I, I have to jump off, guys, but, uh, thank you, Aaron, again, for all the work, it looks great.
No worries.
Take care, guys.
Thanks.
Bye, Mark, thanks.
So, so that's it, that's all we got.
I just need a motion to adjourn, then.
My motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
An aye for me, and again, Aaron, fantastic work, thank you so much, really appreciate it.